Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Tuesday, January 3, 2023, our first meeting of the new year. Briefly, we will have a Finance and Personnel Committee meeting, and then we will move into a regular business meeting tonight. So Chairperson of Finance and Personnel, Councilmember Crowell.
Great, thank you, President Reisler. We have two items on our Finance and Personnel Committee agenda this evening. Prior year expenses. The first is for the Stimson Avenue State Infrastructure Bank loan. We need to appropriate $143,846.70 to the Street Rehabilitation Fund for this loan payment. Are there any questions from the committee about this loan payment? Okay, and moving on to the second item is to appropriate $550,000 to the Medical Fund to cover medical costs from 2022. Any questions on this appropriation from the committee or other members of council? Yes, Members Reisner?
Thank you. Any idea of why the cost went up half a million dollars this year? Was it just we didn't appropriate enough?
Right, I believe if Auditor Hector were here, we did not appropriate enough to cover the expenses that were -- these aren't increases, these are just expenses that came through late in the year.
Okay, so it's not an unexpected something?
And as I understand, it's also one month, it may, as she explained it, the auditor explained, that one month it might be lower, but since we're self-insured, then another month the claims might be higher.
Right.
And so these were several months worth of claims that ended up being higher than anticipated and needed additional money.
I'm satisfied.
Thank you, Member Reisner. Any other questions? Okay, that completes Finance and Personnel. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Crowell. All right, we'll move on to business, our first item being to establish a quorum. We have five of our seven councilmembers here tonight. And the next item of business will be disposition of the minutes. And I, seeing that there are five sessions to be held, I think I'm going to move forward with one motion for each, for all of them together. This will be for the regular session on November 7, the regular session on November 21, a special session on December 5, a special session on December 7, and a special session of council on December 12, 2022. And if I could have a motion for approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the minutes have been accepted. We next have communications, and are there communications from any councilmembers? I might just make one comment. I know that our city crews have been devotedly working to clearing storm sewer drains and just, I know this is an unofficial request, but if your address is in front or behind a storm sewer drain and you see it clogged with leaves, it would be a real help to clear them away and get them up onto the lawn and out of the way of the course of the water, because I think we've got to still have a flood warning in effect right now. Thank you. Any other communications? If none, we'll move on to--
Oh, I have my annual report.
Yes, so we'll move on to reports from other elected officials. Yes, Law Director Elias?
Thank you. The revised code mandates that at the first regular meeting in January, I give an annual report, and I think that the annual report was provided to each of you via the shared drive this afternoon, and I've also given you a hard copy. I won't go through all of it, I'll just give you some of the highlights. And as you know, my office is called the Office of the Law Director and City Prosecutor, and there are two parts, components to my office. I administer the office of the City Prosecutor. I supervise two legal secretaries, I've given you their names in here, and also three other attorneys. I have a Chief City Prosecutor Tracy Meek, City Prosecutor Justin Townley, and as you know, last year we changed one of the prosecutor positions to a Assistant Law Director and Part-Time Prosecutor, and that position is held by Jesse Branner Piddle. So on that side, on the criminal side, we prosecute misdemeanors that occur in the city of Athens, and then by way of an agreement with the Athens County Commissioners and a mandate from the Ohio Revised Code, we prosecute misdemeanors that occur in the unincorporated areas of the county. So something like Nelsonville, that's an incorporated area, we wouldn't prosecute those cases, but the unincorporated areas. Our office prosecutes cases for the police, Athens City Police, High University Police, Department of Liquor Control, the Sheriff's Department, Ohio State Highway Patrol, and on several occasions when the state comes in with a violation, for instance, Department of Agriculture, that's a misdemeanor, we would prosecute that case. So, first page, last paragraph, in 2022, there were 7,262 criminal traffic and OVI cases filed in Athens County Municipal Court. Just for reference, in 2021, there were 7,350. When you're looking at those, approximately 79% of those cases waived to court appearance, pleaded arraignment, entered diversion, or were prosecuted by another jurisdiction. So our office prosecuted 21% of those misdemeanor cases. In 2022, 409 defendants entered diversion for driving near suspension, substance abuse offenses, and involving alcohol, and there were 17 in selective diversion. Our office then has, takes the case from after arraignment, where a person has pled not guilty, all the way through restitution. So then, the prosecutors, page two, have detailed how many cases there were. We prosecuted 371 people who did not have attorney representation. Those are pretty simple cases, like traffic cases, something like that. With attorney representation, 1,079, we had 80 carryover, so the total prosecutions for our office in 2022 were 1,530. Page three are the additional services that our office provides, and at the bottom, this is something our office is very proud of, we are only one of two city prosecutors offices in the state that actually collects restitution. Most often, restitution's ordered on the court order and it's collected by the court. But our office prides ourselves on the fact that we do collect restitution for victims, and last year we collected $28,690. We have cases, once someone has entered a plea, then the case moves to restitution, and the person is required to make restitution within a specific period of time, and if that's not made, then our office files a motion to impose the suspended sentence, and then usually the person starts paying restitution. So, that's the criminal side. The civil side is my side, although I do supervise the prosecutors, I meet with them weekly to discuss the criminal cases. A lot of times, they have discretion, total discretion, on how to handle a criminal case or a traffic case also, DUI case. However, they oftentimes consult with me on how to resolve a case. So on page four are my duties, pages four and five, and I think what you might find the most interesting is the civil litigation in common pleas and federal court. We completed six cases in 2022, there were two carryovers from 2021, four cases were filed during 2022 naming the city of Athens, and no cases are pending at the end of 2022. So that's somewhat unusual.
That's the first I've seen.
The last document, you have an appendix, and that just shows you, we keep track of what kind of cases we have, and the first column is prosecution of defendants without attorney representation, and the second column is with attorney representation. It just, it just shows you how many cases. For instance, last year we prosecuted 218 OVI cases. So anyway, my, I usually set a goal for myself. In the past, my goals have been to update the city code, and as you know, in many cases it hadn't been, it had not been updated since 1994, the city code for traffic and general offenses, so we were able to do that. My goal for 2023 is to, in council, not this in my budget, to go to Matrix. It's a form, it's a way of obtaining and providing discovery to defense attorneys. The reason we need to do that, and it was an initial cost of $10,000, and it's $500 a month, but the reason we need to do that is because of the body cam videos. So when an officer is at a scene taking body cam, has their body camera on, that's discoverable. We have to provide that in discovery, and we don't have the capacity in the office on computer capacity to do that. So this Matrix system is something that's used by the county prosecutor and many of the law enforcement agencies, and what will happen then is if there's a body cam video, then it will be directly uploaded by law enforcement to Matrix. And then when we provide discovery, and discovery is in a criminal case, when somebody obtains an attorney, they're entitled to see whatever evidence we have that we're going to use to prosecute the case. So we will be able to just give the attorney a code, a number, and they can go directly into Matrix and they can take their own video off of Matrix. We'll also do the paper discovery that way, too. I think several law enforcement agencies provide the reports via Matrix. So that's what I'm going to do this year, is we're entering a new era as far as electronic discovery. So anyway, that's my report, and I would be glad to take any questions. Oh, the Athens County Commissioners give us, have provided $79,000 a year for prosecutions, and the cases have dropped somewhat. I did not ask for an increase, I don't know what they will give us. They only passed, my understanding is they passed a temporary budget, not a, so I don't know how much they're going to give us for the year, I would presume 79,000, but because our caseload has dropped somewhat on the criminal side, that was another reason that I reassigned duties to one of the third prosecutor, so that I could have some assistance in the office, so on the civil side. Any questions?
Yes, Councilmember Reisner?
This is a great report. I think this is a lot of the time I've heard your report, and this is the first time I've ever seen the case, that we're not getting sued by somebody in 2023.
Right.
A better, not jinx that, but anyway. I had a question, it's just slightly off topic, but since you're the Law Director and you're there, it's been on my mind. As I understand, sports betting is now legal in the state of Ohio, and the Messenger had a huge thing in their sports section about, this is what you need to know, and I'm still going through it, and I'm still confused. But what I'd like to know is that, because the state has now made this type of betting legal, this type of gambling, will the city of Athens have to change any of its ordinances or anything that, I swear to God that there is somewhere in all our muni code, the city of Athens, something that says, you're not allowed to bet?
I did look at that for member slang, and our city code already provides states that if it's allowed by the state, then it would be allowed in the city. So our city code covers that.
Okay, but there is something that specifically says you can't do it unless the state of Ohio says you can?
Correct, that's exactly right.
Wouldn't it be better to remove that entirely? Clean slate? State of Ohio, let them worry about it?
I think that that's how the language is worded, but I will look at it specifically, and I can come back to council with that.
Okay.
It's a good question.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember McCary?
Thank you for the report, Law Director. Question about the duties listed for the Law Director on page five, update information for Siemens DRD. Just hoping you could clarify what that is and what you learned from it?
Oh, that, we, we had some difficulty with the DRD. The mayor may recall that before it could be sent to the state, all taxes had to be paid, property tax, and there were, I think, two properties who had not been current in their property tax. So we had to update the Siemens DRD in order to get it sent to the state, and it is at the state for approval right now.
And the DRD being the downtown redevelopment district?
Right, yes.
Correct, okay, that's helpful. Okay, yes, some members beyond us.
Thank you. Well, I'd just like to say thank you for this report, and I really appreciate the work that your office does, and how clear you were in explaining the work, and it looks like things are going well.
Do you feel that it is?
So it looks like crime is going down, and civil suits are manageable, so that seems like a good thing.
As far as crime going down, there are less offenses that are being charged, so slightly less. I mean, if you look at the numbers, it's, it's almost the same. I, I looked at 2020, 21, and 22, and in 2020, there were 6,299 cases, 2021, 7,350, it went up slightly, of course, that was COVID in 2020, and 2022, 7,262, so it's not--
It's going in the right direction. What more can you do?
Thank you.
You're looking positive.
Watch out for your catalyzing.
Thank you so much, and thanks for your work with council, too. I mean, we see one component of the work that you do, and this is also helpful to have the rest of the report. Mayor Patterson?
President Reisler, if I may, I have a few items tonight I'd like to share with council. I know that earlier today I did send council kind of a very brief Cliff Notes year review for 2022. Before I go there, though, I do want council to be brought up to date with the congressional record, the proceedings of proceeding and debates of the 117th Congress, confirmations. So these are executive nominations confirmed by the US Senate, and as I peruse through this list and look down here, oh, look, there's Colonel Andrew B. Stone, who is being confirmed as a brigadier general. He will not take that position until there is a vacancy here in the state of Ohio or within the Guard, Army National Guard system, but you know, extremely proud of Colonel Stone, our Service Safety Director, being confirmed by the US Senate to take on this high armor, so he'll be a one-star general with the Ohio National Guard. Another thing I want to mention to council is that January is Cervical Health Awareness Month, so we'll be reading a proclamation tomorrow to that effect. And finally, going back to the kind of year review, I enjoyed doing this, I went back and looked at my calendar, basically, from 2022, and looked at things like city progress. I looked at awards and recognitions, some notable engagements and appointments that I have received, committees or boards or other entities that I've been appointed to. If I may just go through, I'm not going to read this in its entirety, it's long, but in terms of city progress, you know, the city was selected as one of a few autonomous vehicle test sites in the state of Ohio, to where we currently have Drive Ohio and the Russ College of Engineering have a van that I have seen recently on Court Street as well as West Union Street on one of the three test loops as they're going around. The Stimson Avenue project was completed. Soccer pitches at West State Street at the OU Driving Range was a big success, using part of the driving range for soccer or football pitches. We hired our first DEIA coordinator for the city of Athens. The city of Athens bond rating was retained at AA2 this year, when we went before Moody's, Kathy Hector, Auditor Hector and I. We acquired the Ten Acre Parcel off of Stimson Avenue from Ohio University for our future fire station headquarters. Secured $2.3 million for the Stimson Avenue Bridge Rehab Project, secured $1.4 million for the future 56 and 682 roundabout project for planning and design, secured $1.4 million, that was, the 3.2 was for the Stimson Avenue Bridge, 1.4 for the roundabout, secured an additional $1 million for the West Union Street project, and we created the Athens City Community Improvement Corporation in 2022, thanks to council. Some other notable things, some of the awards and recognitions that the city's received, this was, showed up in the, our local newspaper by the reporter who's here with us today. Nicole did a story on the city receiving the Climate Action Community Award, the community energy, or Clean Energy Community Award, as well as the Clean Energy Investor Award, which is based on our fiber, or not fiber, our carbon fee, and some of the initiatives that we plan to use some of that carbon fee money for here in the city, most notably the 2.3 future solar array down at the community center campus. Engagements, I went on 22 trips, both within the state and outside the state, across the US, three trips to Washington DC, the most recent was to go to the White House and speak with the cabinet members as to how we were using our ARPA money here in the city of Athens, and how we plan to use some of the Future Builds Act and the Inflation Reduction Act money, if we're successful in acquiring money from those two bills. Two trips to Chillicothe at the request of Senator Brown to talk about keeping the VA Hospital in Chillicothe, and the final, the second meeting there was with the Secretary of Veteran Affairs, Secretary Madonna, and we were successful in making the case for that not being moved to Dayton, Ohio. Made a trip to Clemson, Ohio, or Clemson, South Carolina, for the International Town Gun Association, to where I assumed the presidency of ITGA, and a sundry of other places, to include going out to Phoenix, Arizona with Judge Grace to learn more about the cities and communities and fines, for fees and fines, and justice boot camp, which was quite the learning experience. And then finally, just to share some of the appointments for this year, and that being that I was appointed to the Ohio Municipal League Board of Trustees this year. Again, I mentioned the presidency for the ITGA, and appointed to the Ohio University President's Search Committee. I plan to do a State of the City address sometime in late February or early March, as we get all the reports together from the different departments, because that'll be a big part of the State of the City report that goes out, which will be bound and available for anybody who cares to see the highlights from all the different departments here in the city. Thank you, President Reisler.
Well, thanks, and thanks for all your work and the city's work in bringing our community forward. Any questions or comments? Councilmember McCary?
Thank you. I was pleased to hear all of that progress, particularly those environmental accomplishments, and sustainability is such an important part of our vision for Athens' future, and I'm curious about a resolution that our council adopted in my earliest days joining on becoming plastic-free by 2023, and we're now in 2023, and I'm curious about your perspective on our ability to pursue that notion?
I, we will attain that this year. As a matter of fact, Andrew Shicky, Deputy Service Safety Director, is compiling a slate that will go before council for the approval of all the events here in the city of Athens, where we have street closures, and, well, most of it's street closures because it requires council action. And one of the things that he has been doing is with every event organizer informing them that there will be no plastic cups, there will be no plastic cutlery, everything will have to be aluminum cups, if they want to serve something in a cup, no water bottles, no plastic bottles, so we're pretty clear with event organizers in terms of not having, for city sanctioned events, having any plastic. So I think we're going to attain it. I know that we're going to, it's just something that we're going to mandate, that organizers make sure that they're using cutlery, they can be bamboo, they can be anything that is compostable, and, but not plastic, as well as anything containing a beverage, cannot be a plastic container, cup or bottle.
Thank you. And just one more question about looking forward to the report of State of the City in late February. To what extent would it be possible to organize some of those reports from the different departments in a way that shows where progress has been made in line with goals in Athens' 2040 comprehensive plan?
We can explore that, to make sure that anything we've been able to address that is in that comprehensive plan. I like that, like that idea a lot. You know, the comprehensive plan, plan was codified not that long ago, so it'll be interesting to see if we have hit some of our marks that are in the comprehensive plan, but I'll make sure the department heads highlight something that does--
Contribute.
--the objectives of the comprehensive plan.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's wonderful, great idea, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to our ordinances for first reading, 123, is an ordinance amending the 2023 appropriation ordinance introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Reisler. As discussed at the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting minutes ago, this is our first ordinance of the year, and I'll go ahead and read the section one. The 2022 appropriation ordinance, 155-22, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $143,846.70 to the Street Rehabilitation Fund, $572 for the Stimson State Infrastructure Bank loan payment, and $550,000 to the Medical Insurance Fund, $866, to cover 2022 medical costs. Thank you, President Reisler, and I don't believe we're able to suspend the rules tonight because we don't have five. Thank you. But I would like to say to council that these are prior year bills, so we would like to rush, push these through as soon as possible so that they can be paid, so hopefully at our next regular meeting. Thank you.
All right, and 223 is an ordinance authorizing the payment of prior year expenses and declaring an emergency, also introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Reisler, and as previously mentioned, these two items, we are authorizing the auditor to expend those amounts to pay these prior year expenses. Thank you, President Reisler.
Thank you. And we'll move on to announcements and other businesses, business, and as Councilmember Crowell noted, we will be having a meeting next week, it will be a committee meeting at this point that we'll be having. We now have some motions, and are there any other announcements before I move on to the motions? Okay, we have three to make. One is a motion to accept the November 2022 financial reports.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and those minutes, or the financial reports have been approved. The next one is a motion to accept the November 2022 credit card transactions.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay, and that motion to accept the credit card transactions is approved. We now have a reappointment to the Environmental and Sustainability Commission, and I believe Councilmember Crowell, you have the honors?
Yes, thank you. We have a reappointment of Sarah Conley-Baloo, whose term expired in 2022, and she has agreed to continue serving, and I would like to make a motion to reappoint her to the Environment and Sustainability Commission.
Seconded.
Good. Motion and second, and for her appointment, for Sarah Conley-Baloo's appointment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, and we thank her in advance for the service. We now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on any matter that was not addressed on the agenda tonight, and no, I'm seeing, no, nobody, the audience member is not interested, so thank you. And we can now adjourn if we have a motion to do so. So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you very much. We are adjourned at 7:31 PM.